Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Mr. Cara Angelo. Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwaz.
Here.
Mr. Hung.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston. President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. We'll need this print very, very small. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has called notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotape meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. As we have been doing, we're going to go directly into closed and then come back for our public portion. So, whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion at a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exception of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for the aforementioned subjects. So moved by Mrs. Becker. Second by Mr. Hung. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentience? Okay. Thank you. We are in closed. We shall see you in about an hour. Okay. Ready? Ladies? Yes? Welcome back. It's so nice to see a full house, smiling faces. We are back in open session and we're going to start with Dr. Valesky's superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Lacks, and good evening, everyone. It's great to see everyone here. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Memorial Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Brooke Serbone. Cheryl Jones is the principal. Mu Alpha Theta, also known as Math Honor Society Induction Ceremony, was held on Tuesday, December 6th. Mu Alpha Theta is an organization comprised of a talented group of students who have been recognized both nationally and abroad for their combination of scholarship and service. Each of the eighty-two inductees had met the requirements for membership, including distinction in college preparatory mathematics, in addition to all other academic subjects that have demonstrated their ability to work hard and show initiative and reliability. These members have the opportunity to share their talents with their peers as they volunteer their time to provide countless students with additional help in their mathematics courses. Last evening, Jessica D. Benedetti, Jessica D. Bentaden-
It's that kind of night.
It's my fault.
Blame it on the rain.
Jessica D... We're staying here until I get it right. And I talk to her all the time. Benedetti. The Science Department Chair organized the Science Career Night, which provided students an opportunity to meet with local professionals in various STEM fields. The goal of the Science Career Night was to expose students to a variety of careers available and allow them to connect with members of their community who are succeeding in these fields. In some cases, students were provided information on possible summer internships, and students enjoyed meeting with a variety of professionals, including electrical engineers, therapists, physicians, cybersecurity specialists, medical examiners, biotech professionals, and so many more. The careers presented reflected a variety of fields and levels of training. In total, there were thirty-three presenters and approximately one hundred and fifty students. The students engaged in seven ten-minute rotations, which allowed them to meet in small groups with professionals, and get detailed information about training, the career lifestyle, and compensation in that field of work in a more intimate setting. East Brunswick community appreciates the efforts of the volunteers who went to great lengths to provide engaging presentations. One station even conducted ultrasound demonstrations. And we would like to also thank Diane Eastup and Science Honor Society for assisting throughout the night. In sports, a new era began on Friday evening, December 9th, at Pro Skate in South Brunswick. The East Brunswick South River Spotswood Ice Hockey Team made history by competing in its first NJIS... NJSIAA game. Somewhere between my mouth and my brain, there appears to be a disconnect.
Perseverance.
I might have to pull in like an intern to... There is an initiative by the National Federation of High School Sports and the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association, also known as NJSIAA, to what they have called is bench bad behavior at our athletic events. Please remember when you attend any athletic event at East Brunswick High School or Churchill Junior High School, there is an expectation of demonstrating positive support for the players, coaches, fans, and officials. The players and coaches and officials are out to do the very best they can for every moment of the game. Please lead by example to encourage a positive experience for all when attending our athletic events. We want to represent East Brunswick with class and dignity. Our players compete in scholastic athletics for fun and for their love of the game. So, thanks for that. Now, if you would turn your attention to this wall over here and that young lady in the red with the blonde hair, I would like to take this moment to recognize an employee for her valor. Jessica Logan, who is one of our nurses and is working at Lawrence Brook Elementary School. Jessica recently faced a real emergency with a student from her school when she discovered that he was choking, and her quick thinking and reflexive professional actions helped to ensure a safe immediate outcome for this student. We are proud of her and we are grateful she was the right person at the right time, as well as all the staff who assisted in this event. So Jessica, on behalf of me and a grateful community, thank you for your efforts.
That's why we truly have special people that work here.
We absolutely do.
It's not a district, it's a family. Thank you.
Uh, there's a little bit more. Sorry. Just some updates.
Hard to top that one, though.
It is. It is. And I'm not going to try to either. Please join us for an envisioned math night, or envisioned parent night, to learn more about the program and all the resources available for parents and support their children at home. This event will be held on Tuesday, January 3rd, at the Jan Pack and Hammershold Upper Elementary School. Parents of students in grades K to four are invited from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. Parents of students in grades five to six are invited from 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. And just a few reminders, this is important stuff for all the students in the audience. Friday, December 23rd, is a single-session day for all students. Lunch will be served for students in grades K through six. Unfortunately, schools will be closed from December 24th through January 1st for winter recess. Please wipe the sad faces off. And school will resume on Monday, January 2nd. And believe it or not, we will be into 2023. I would like to express my heartfelt good wishes to the Board, the community, our staff for a healthy and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Our student rep, as you notice, is absent this evening. I believe you said she's home waiting for college acceptances since it is that season. So, Megan, we're thinking of you and hoping positive thoughts. Which leads us to the very exciting learning across the district. Have you heard a good song lately? Or should I say, have you heard a great chorus sing a good song lately? Chorus at the elementary level is open to third and fourth graders. Chittick has some fantastic singers, and tonight we are showcasing the third-grade members of the Chittick Chorus. They will be singing "Each of Us is a Flower" by Charlotte Diamond, and I'm going to ask my friends at the Board deus to go onto that side so that the children can sing for us as well as their parents in the audience.
No, no, Kathy. Kathy, all the way over. All the way over. Follow Aurora. Go on, follow. Follow your mind. Follow your mind. There we go. Good job.
Hello, parents, Board members, and all of our honored guests tonight, Dr. Valesky. It is so good to be here. My name's Kathy Mannan. I'm the music teacher at Chittick, and I have to admit to you that when we first did the restructuring and fifth grade was going up to Hammershold, I have to say, I was a little nervous about having third grading chorus, okay? I'm used to fourth and fifth grade being chorus, and how is the third grade really gonna do in chorus? Well, I'm so excited to bring my third graders here tonight because now you get to see what it sounds like to have third graders in chorus. Right here, you've got our third graders from in the Chittick Chorus. We have Aurora. Wave when I say your name. We have Aurora, Liam, Ariana, Karas, Sophia, Ria, Anaya, Antonia, Leila, Tori, Leana, Haley, Jumana, Sadja, Olivia, Catalina, Marina, and Iman. Okay. And I'm so proud of these guys. When I had a chance to bring them here, to bring some students here, I said, I want you guys to hear my third graders. So, you're in for a treat. I lost Karen. I'm ready to go. There you are. Okay.
Each of us is a flower, growing in life's garden. Each of us is a flower, we need the sun and rain. Each of us is a flower, growing in life's garden. Each of us is a flower, we need the sun and rain. Sun, shine your warmth on me. Moon, cool me with your night. Wind, bring the gentle rain. Earth, dig my roots down deep. Each of us is a flower, growing in life's garden. Each of us is a flower, we need the sun and rain. Each of us is a flower, growing in life's garden. Each of us is a flower, we need the sun and rain. Sun, shine your warmth on me. Moon, cool me with your night. Wind, bring the gentle rain. Earth, dig my roots down deep. Each of us is a flower, growing in life's garden. Each of us is a flower, we need the sun and rain. Each of us is a flower, growing in life's garden. Each of us is a flower, we need the sun and rain. We need the sun and rain. We need the sun and rain.
Great job. Great job. All right. Thank you so much. Great job. Thank you. Wait, two room?
We're taking a girl picture.
Great job. Come on back.
Shh. 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 That's not enough.
It's important.
Are done?
Can we stop smiling?
They're still going.
This is what happens when you guys get to be so successful. People want to take your picture.
Yes. All right, friends, follow me. There's a special presentation for our playground, so follow me. Okay, here we go.
Do we get a playground?
If there's anybody that came in here this disgusting rainy night without a smile on your face, I am going to bet a lot of money that that has changed because I can't stop smiling. There is nothing better than young voices.
They did a great job.
You guys were fabulous. Did you...
I just wanted to say something to them after you finish.
Sure.
After you finish. You guys, a long time ago, not that long, but a long time ago, when I was in elementary school, I was in the chorus, and I have not... I'm a little older than you. No comments or no calculators out amongst the adults. I still remember the chorus, the concerts in elementary school. I'm a mommy. I'm...I still remember it and the excitement of being up there and singing my heart out and seeing my parents and family and all my friends' parents out there. There's nothing like it, right? It's a wonderful feeling. Singing makes you feel alive and good, and you make other people feel like that. You brought us such joy. Remember this. You will remember it someday soon. You will be my age, because I'm not that much older than you. Remember that. And you will treasure this. Thank you for sharing it with us.
When I was in the chorus, they told me to mouth the words. So I...extra special... No, just kidding. Just kidding. That's...I can't say that because I went to school in this district, so I would never... no one in this district would do that. I mouthed the words because I was shy.
We can look you up.
You can, yeah. You were terrific, and I would sing along, but I wouldn't mouth the words on my own. So, this is a special, special Chittick night. We have a presentation of appreciation from the Murray A. Chittick Elementary School students, families, and staff to the Board of Education and administrators for the wonderful addition to the school playground. Sorry, there's a step here. So, this will be short, I promise, but on behalf of the parents, the staff, the administration, the kids, most importantly, of Chittick Elementary, we have a thank you card to Dr. Valesky and the Board, and this was disseminated, passed around by the staff to all the students. So we want to make sure that the students have their voice here today, but also their signatures here today. And I'll thank you, Karen, for the display too of the new Chittick playground that was added to the play zone for our kids, so we really appreciate it. Kids, what do we have to say?
Thank you.
Karen, can you...that slide right there, I want to make sure the parents know, this is not a new water hazard for your children. That's still in construction. No, they're not going to come home with muddy clothes. So I just want to make sure you left thinking that.
It looks terrific.
Yeah.
I hope that you enjoy it, and I thank you all, our little singers, for coming out because learning across the district, and I thank the EBA for this, is one of my favorite parts, actually probably my favorite part of the evening. So you guys show us what's going on. Some of us have kids around your age, some of us have kids that have gotten a little bit older and are going through different milestones. So as Vicki said, she remembers being in chorus, and I remember my kids singing in chorus. And it's nice to see your smiling faces. Keep doing what you're doing. I have a feeling that some of you will see in some of our upper-level choruses and a cappella groups when you get to the high school. So I'm expecting to see some of you come back in a few years and see us. Keep singing.
Lot of talent.
And a lot of talent.
Yeah.
I'm going to call a quick recess so our little friends can exit. If you want any extra pictures, you can have a little bit of fun, so I don't have to do a motion very... So we're going to go into recess, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes. Thank you again to our friends at Chittick.
Yeah. Good night, everyone. Good night.
Get home safe and happy holidays, kids. Okay. Oh, good. Yes. Now, we have some friends in the audience, some old friends in the audience, so this is going to be very difficult because Dr. Valesky now has to give a presentation on the public hearing on the student safety data system after that. So top that, Dr. Valesky.
No, no, I can't. I can't. I will...
Sing the presentation.
I'll challenge Mrs. Becker on her assessment of her age, though, so I think that...
You guys are like...
Game on.
Tonight is a public hearing on our student safety data system, and the report is for the year 2021-2022. On an annual basis, school districts are required to report at a public hearing the number of acts of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse that occurred in the previous school year. This report also meets the federal requirements for identifying persistently dangerous schools. We report instances of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse to the Board on a monthly basis, and at this meeting, I'd like to review a summary of those incidents that occurred during the 2021-2022 school year. So rather than compare the 2021-2022 to the previous school year, which was obviously, you know, 2020-2021, or 2019-2020, when we had remote instruction and we were physically not in our buildings for some time, this comparison tonight will be for the 2021-2022 data compared to pre-pandemic 2018-2019. So we're trying to compare for the public the actual times when students were mostly in school for the school year. Under the category of violence, total incidents of violence, these are fights, threats, and assaults, were up by one. Pre-pandemic, we had forty-six, and as of 2021-2022, we had forty-seven acts that were recorded. Vandalism incidents, that is damage to property, false public alarm, and theft, were up by one as well, from nine pre-pandemic to ten in the 2021-2022 school year. Under the category of substance abuse, incident counts decreased from thirty-six pre-pandemic to twenty-five recorded in the 2021-2022 school year. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying, also known as HIB, in 2021 and 2022, there were one hundred and fifty-five total HIB investigations throughout our schools, with sixty of those confirmed HIVs. In 2018-19, which was the year prior to the pandemic that we were comparing to, there were a hundred and twenty-one investigations with twenty-one confirmed HIVs. Activities were available during the course of the school year to prevent school violence and highlight the importance of school safety. In addition, our administration and staff review policies and regulations, safety crisis procedures, and important topics promoting student safety on a regular basis. Some examples of the activities that I want to highlight for the public are sources of strength, peer and adult mentoring programs and activities, our Gay-Straight Alliance, our Safe Space, our Positive Messages, School Spirit Days throughout the district, Make-A-Wish letters, mentor programs, a variety of cultural organizations we have throughout our schools, peace pledges, cyberbullying programs, our SSO and EBPD video safety clips, the acknowledgement of peacemakers of the week, the Oveius Anti-Bullying Program with a focus on class meetings, Violence Prevention Week activities, and Respect Week activities. I'm happy to report that due to our effective training and staff, the work performed by our Director of Security, Paul Nellicio, and our security team, Supervisor of Student Services, Danielle Blalock, our SASs, our Student Assistance Specialist, SAS, I'm sorry, our Supervisor of Counseling and Career Readiness, Vanessa Amatoro, our school counselors, nurses, teachers, support staff, and our administrators, we continue to make significant strides in training and understanding the needs of our students. But let me be clear, we still have work to do, and we appreciate the work of Dr. Figaro, who is unable to be here tonight, and the support of this entire Board of Education. In summary, these Brunswick public schools are safe schools, but we continue to look for ways to improve our school climate throughout the district, and we are continually working on additional ways to educate our students and the community on social and emotional health, as well as substance abuse, which are concerns at both the state and national levels. We have strong administrators, well-trained student assistance specialists and school counselors, caring teachers, nurses, support staff, and most of all, wonderful students, and we have supportive parents. We continue to look at proactive approaches to addressing the continued safety of our eight thousand three hundred students and eighteen hundred staff in our eleven schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. If there are questions, because I realize that you're giving this on Dr. Figaro's behalf, so is it best...
But I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Okay, well, that was my question. Should we ask you questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Sure. And if I can't answer, I'll get you the answer from Dr. Figaro or his team.
Okay, because I just was going to...
And we have Paul Nellicio in the audience, so if anything related to security issues that we can talk about in a public format, he'd be willing to say anything.
Okay. No, I was actually very pleased to hear the substance use going down. That was quite a drop, especially coming out of the pandemic, because obviously one of our concerns has always been the mental health aspects of these kids coming through those times. So the question I have is, the HIV went up, which we said everything else did, but I noticed that it tripled in terms of the confirmed cases, and I'm wondering, do we think that this is something that hopefully will go down again next year because this was our kids coming back after not being socialized as much and not knowing how to deal with each other?
Yes, and so we've certainly looked at this, and I would say, I would point to one thing that probably is at the epicenter of all these events, and that's conflict resolution, unable to resolve a conflict between two or more students in a reasonable way, which ends up resulting in HIV. Somebody saying something inappropriate, somebody continuing to do something inappropriate, establishing a trend, or offending people. In some cases, we're not talking about just the perpetrator and the victim, we're talking about the other people who may have witnessed the event. So the HIV is a pretty encompassing law, and our staff spent a tremendous amount of time investigating each and every one of those. And you as a Board know, you've actually had some interaction, you know, at different levels with the HIV. So the HIV is, I think we're applying it effectively. We have a strong team of people that do the thorough investigation, and for the most part, I think that parents understand that this is a corrective measure for their students.
And the hope would be that as a lot of the programs that you've implemented, you know, really take root, then they'll be able to hopefully come back and drop again. And also for the kids being, you know, amongst each other. There's conflict in life. I think as adults, we know how to deal with it a lot better than children do, their learning.
Right.
And, you know, COVID took a few of those years of interpersonal relationships away from these kids, so...
And I think our principals are doing a terrific job, and when they're having conversations with the parents of these students, you know, that's re-engaging the parents in some of the activities they're seeing that... time investigating each and every one of those. And you, as a board, know, you've actually had some interaction, you know, at different levels with the HIB. So the HIB is, I think we're applying it effectively. We have a strong team of people that do the thorough investigation. And for the most part, I think that parents understand that this is a corrective measure for their students.
And the hope would be that as a lot of the programs that you've implemented, you know, really take root, then they'll be able to hopefully come back and drop again. And also for the kids being, you know, amongst each other. There's conflict in life. I think as adults, we know how to deal with it a lot better than children do, they're learning.
Right.
And, you know, COVID took a few of those years of interpersonal relationships away from these kids.
And I think our principals are doing a terrific job. And when they're having conversations with the parents of these students, you know, that's re-engaging the parents in some of the activities they're seeing that they may not have seen at home, but we're seeing it in school. And the only way this is going to be successful is for a partnership between families and school.
Absolutely. Thank you. Does anyone have questions on this side? Mrs. Becker?
Thank you, Lori. Dr. V, I don't, again, and I don't know if you can answer, so it's okay, or Paul, maybe. I know that from time to time, we've heard reports of gang-related issues, incidents. Is that reflected in these numbers?
If there were things to report, it would be included in here, if there were any things related to a gang affiliation. And from time to time, I'm not going to, you know, sugarcoat this for the community, from time to time, we hear, we get reports, there are active gangs all throughout this region. We have, you know, the Turnpike Corridor, that's a major thoroughfare from south to north. I, you know, I don't believe that we have anything that I would say is a gang problem.
Oh, of course not.
But we do have, from time to time, students who identify as being affiliated with a particular, and in some cases, maybe true or not true, you know? Paul, did you, you have more on-the-ground information than I do?
There was just an article in the Star-Ledger about, it's in the entire state. Every, there's no town that's immune, so we don't have a problem. I was just wondering if there were related in those numbers, but it's in the entire state.
Yeah, I think we very accurately report anything that we would have come across. We didn't find any, you know, known gang members or affiliation, like Dr. Valeski said, sometimes there's, you know, we get reports of. And my always thing was, if in doubt, we pin it out, we investigate it, we work with the police department. We actually brought a state investigator in to provide gang training for our administrators this year.
Oh, that's great.
Very much aware, always looking at it, and we don't, we're not seeing it, you know?
Awesome.
Anything else I can help out with?
I think awareness is where we are right now, is just being really aware of that. It does exist, and we need to keep it out of our schools.
Thank you for that. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Dr. V.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. In a moment, we're going to have For the Good of the Cause for the Public, but if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak to this issue, and this issue only, please raise your hand, come up. Okay, that concludes our public hearing, which brings us to For the Good of the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with appropriate administrative staff. Public participation, we always tell you, is not an opportunity to engage in a dialogue with the board, but yet it's your time to speak to the board, and any issues that are identified will be later addressed by Dr. Valeski's staff. Participation is limited to three minutes duration. And now I will open for public comments. Is there anyone this evening that would like to speak to the board? So you're a public person, but it is an old friend, so I would normally say, which I will say, actually state your name and address for the public, for the record, but it's nice to see Mr. Seeler back, one of the members that used to sit on this side of the table, fresh off a very exciting victory, which I'm hoping maybe that's what you're here to share with us this evening.
Not about wins and losses.
Well, I'm very excited and proud for your kids.
So I'm Chad Seeler, 11 Apache Court, also Heavenly Farms Turf Field B is my secondary address. It's been a whole season since I've last been here. For some of the kids at St. Bart's, the season just ended last Saturday, believe it or not. Just want to go through a few things I stated back in June and July with the board. So you mentioned you guys had 55 interest kids playing for seventh and eighth grade football at Churchill. Last game of the season, you had 34 kids at the game. So either there was no interest, or kids quit, one of the two. I had 29 seventh graders on my St. Bart's Buffaloes team, just to compare that. Your schedule consisted of five games, St. Bart's program again, one preseason game, eight games for regular season, and plus two playoff games. Practice, your team was bussed from Churchill to the high school, and they practiced whatever field they could find for them. It could be on a baseball field, the grass baseball field, wherever they can find. St. Bart's practiced on turf fields at Heavenly Farms. Coaches, you had additional coaches here, you had three. St. Bart's had seven. Games, your home games were played on that lower grass field. I don't even want to call it that. Teams were late coming to games, teams were late going to games. There was a running clock at those games by the referees. I know the refs. St. Bart's games are on turf fields, home and away, or manicured grass fields, and there were 10-minute quarters kept on the scoreboard. Equipment, did a good job buying new helmets. Unfortunately, they were for the seventh and eighth graders, and you got, the freshmen, juniors, and seniors were a little bit annoyed. Specifically, you bought SpeedFlex helmets, they're number five in the marketplace, that's if you have the top-of-the-line SpeedFlex. We use Vices Zero Two helmets, number one. You had old shoulder pads still. Some of the kids looked like the old Carol Burnett skit with the drapes out to here on them, little kids. All new shoulder pads at St. Bart's. You also had not-integrated pants handed out to kids. Integrated pants are when pants have thigh pads, knee pads, hip pads, and butt pads put in. You gave kids pants without hip pads and butt pads or thigh pads. Parents had to go out by girdles, that's an issue. I can get new shoulder pads at St. Bart's. Playing time, in AYF football, this 29-member team, every kid had to play 10 plays. There are kids on your seventh, eighth-grade team that didn't play 10 plays the whole season. How are you growing a program in the sport? As for all year, your offensive statistics as a program, one kid ran the ball right, one kid ran the ball left, 95% of the time. St. Bart's, we had 13 kids carry the ball, catch the ball at our 29, with 24 rushing TDs and 16 passing TDs on the season. Just to know that, the players that played mostly for your team were the eighth graders, like I said it would be. Seventh graders had two kids get any substantial playing time whatsoever. They're both coming to me next year. Good job. And that's basically it. And also, just so you know, four of our kids were state All-Stars, went to Florida...
Thank you.
And won a championship.
Thank you.
And you couldn't even name them as a coach, a varsity coach.
Very nice to see you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak to the board? Dr. Simbicki.
Good evening. Dana Simbicki, President of the East Brunswick Education Association. I am so happy to bring back Learning Across the District. It was a great night tonight. You know, this is our second presentation since COVID, and it was beautiful. And I hope you all have a wonderful holiday. And to keep in the spirit of the holiday and charity, I have to share something wonderful that happened today. The East Brunswick Education Association hosted the Optical Academy, which they come, and we were able to partner with the township. We used the Community Arts Center, and we had 80 staff members, and we also opened it up to the township employees, and they were able to get eye exams for $30 and classes for $29. And our numbers were a little bit low. We grew over the past couple days. The most important part of that, there was ratios for the amount of exams that we paid for. We were able to give 10 of our East Brunswick students in need free exam, free classes today. It was absolutely wonderful. And we had a family come in, and the caregiver was talking to the doctor about how difficult it is. And the doctor said, "I'm going to help you. I'm going to give you a job where you can work from home." And it was just so incredibly touching, and, you know, it's an overused saying, but it really does take a village, and this was a perfect example. So it was just really heartwarming, and I just wanted to share that as we all are entering the holiday season. So happy holidays, my best to you, and have a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful week off. Take care.
Thank you, Dr. Simbicki. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak to the board? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public portion, which brings us to our Board of Agenda for the evening. Before I ask for a motion to move this evening's agenda, is there anything that needs separating out?
Can I just make a couple comments?
You absolutely can.
Just please note, on page six, under Board of Education, number three, the Regulation 5200, attendance is being removed. On page seven, under Facilities, number one, the change order is also being removed. Action will not be taken on those two items tonight.
And the addendum?
And there is an addendum on HR.
HR addendum, okay. So that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion. I see Mrs. Becker, who would like to second the motion, Mr. Sizmar. And before I ask for discussion on the entire agenda, as I've said before, it's on everything here tonight, I just wanted to call your attention to an item on the financial agenda. We approve gifts quite often from the schools from different places. In my years of being on this Board of Education, this is the first time that we've accepted a gift from a Board of Education member. And I just wanted to say to Mr. Hong how special it is. You'll notice the $1,500 gift to Memorial School, where his children go, and some of the people up here's children went as well. I just think that is incredibly kind and generous of you, and just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, that you are someone that not only gives of your time to be up here on this board, because we are not a paid board, you do all that you do out of the kindness of your heart, but you've also actually generously donated money as well as time, and I just thought that was something that was worth recognizing. And congratulations as well, he also, it's the Lee Wu evening, your appointment, he missed the last meeting, as you all know, because he was at the...
What happened?
He is now our delegate. Want to tell, Mrs. Becker?
Yes. I'm sorry I missed the December 1st board meeting. I went to the Middlesex County School Board Association meeting, and for that meeting, I was elected to the Board of Directors for New Jersey School Board Association.
Whoa. Well, hey, that's... Beautiful tribute, Lori.
Well, I just, as I said, you've been on longer than I have, but in all the years, that was just something that I had never seen before.
I've never seen it.
Wanted to make sure it was mentioned, so...
You're awesome.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm looking at you, because I knew it. I know, my buddy Mark's going to be... Go ahead.
I was going to say about Mr. Hong, too, and I'll just cap with what you said with one point. There's too many politicians out there that do stuff before an election, and then after the election, crickets. I just wanted to highlight, Mr. Hong's gift is after a successful election. So I think that deserves highlighting, because, you know, with social media and everything else, they're going for, you know, the signaling that they do out there prior to election, they disappear. This is quite the opposite, so I think it's that much more admirable...
Very good point.
That it was after the election.
Absolutely. And he did it quietly, and no one would have noticed had we not wrote it.
Yes.
So I'm glad that you did that as well.
And secondly, under Curriculum Instruction, Mr. Zachary Morrison, to get someone of his caliber and expertise to come in and, you know, be there for students for $200 is amazing. You know, again, sometimes in society, people try to bleed school districts and, you know, come up with some new product that you have to buy to make money. For someone of Mr. Morrison's caliber to come in here for the $200, bravo to him and bravo to the people who engineered that to bring him into our district. So that's my two comments for this evening.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Look at Matt, he's a... Okay, will the secretary please call the room?
Mrs. Becker?
Yes, except it's abstaining on Board of Education, item two, minutes December 1st, 2022.
Note it. Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwaz?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes, abstaining on Board of Education, items one and two.
Okay. Mrs. Reese?
Yes, abstaining on item number two, minutes December 1st.
Note it. And President Lacks?
Yes, with the same exception. I can't speak. Now you pass it to me. Yes, on item number two.
It's usually me.
I know. No, it's usually Dr. Valeski. He's rubbed off on me. Okay.
Blame me.
Carries. Bringing us to new and or old business, committee reports information items and For the Good of the Cause for the Board. Mrs. Reese, sorry on this side.
I just wanted to say, in the vein of the holidays, thank you to our fellow, you know, board members, administration, teachers, students. I mean, it's a wonderful start to the year, and even what the, you know, Mrs. Simbicki has said about, you know, collecting for those who need eyeglasses, these kind of beautiful things that the teachers do on a daily basis, we're very thankful for it, and that's what makes East Brunswick special. And, you know, we sometimes forget, you know, there's a lot of bad news in the world and a lot of negativity, but the daily things that happen here really are, you know, something to look at and to be thankful for, and I wish you all a very happy and healthy holiday season.
Very, very nice. Well, that's what was nice. Actually, this is the first time I saw you do for Jessica Logan in your superintendent report. That was actually a really nice touch, because what she did is above and beyond, but it really does...
Did it a long time ago for Mark Sizmar. Yeah, I did it for Mark years ago.
Oh, see? But that was very, very nice, because there are these stories that go above and beyond our staff.
Yeah, every day, there are examples of things happening, and we, you know, fortunately, this was a quick and it was a successful resolution, but there are things that go on behind the scenes every day that we don't have the opportunity to capture, that make us a great school district, and you can walk in any classroom and see a teacher engaging with students in ways that you walk out and you go, you know what? The future's looking bright, so...
Especially as I have a child getting ready to graduate, and she talks a lot about a lot of the teachers that have gotten there along the way.
Yes, some of this audience are having children get ready to go to college, some of this audience have children that have completed their education or are looking to go into the workforce, and so there's a lot of changes going on.
She got her seal by literacy this week, and the funniest thing was, and she wanted to, she wanted me to text her sixth and seventh-grade French teacher, Madame Ferrera. I said, "Well, she's in Germany, Ashley," who has since retired, but that's the impact that she had on her. She loves her teachers, but this is an impact. So here she is, you know, by literate and thanking the woman that really got her started in sixth grade, so they do it all levels. Mrs. Chu?
I just wanted to add, I know before we were commending what an amazing performance those third graders did, but I was also watching the interaction of the teacher and just kind of following the vein of what you're talking about. I was watching the interaction of, was it Mrs. Mannan? Just the relationship, she had the kids, it really showed, and how the kids were so... They were really just working hard to do a great job, and you could see that the teacher had a lot to do with it. It just jumped out, it was just amazing. That's going to be a teacher they're going to remember.
Mm-hmm. Well, then, did you have more?
Mrs. Gwaz?
Oh, I'm sorry, Heather, I didn't...
Oh, it's okay. I was listening to what Susannah was saying, because I agree. On December 7th, the Student Services Committee met. Again, much like having the students here, it was the first time we had met in person since we, you know, the beginning of the pandemic, and it was really wonderful to have everybody back in, and I can't thank enough the number of staff members that participate in those meetings that go so late. But the highlight of the meeting was definitely, there was just the littlest bit of talk about ice hockey. It was right before the opening game, and Mr. Malta was here to present, but we have 22 ice hockey players that are out there, and everyone was very excited. We also heard from Health and Special Education. There's a link on the minutes that you were sent about the distribution of the program or of the programs throughout the district that was useful, and how Special Ed is coordinating with the community, which was really impressive. There was also discussion about the counseling services and how the number of students that were being introduced at Hammershold for the transition was handled with the number of counselors that we have there now. It was really very creative and inventive, and in fact, during that presentation, there was a technological glitch, and they were creative and inventive, again, to manage to get it up. There was like one screen showing the video and another computer playing the words, and they were almost synced. But it was really impressive how they managed to reach all the students at Hammershold in a very timely way at the beginning of the school year to introduce themselves, because there were so many students to be met with. They also discussed that, it's Essential School Solutions, that's right, ESS?
Or Effective School Solutions.
Effective School Solutions, thank you. That they really, it's being so maximized, it's being, obviously, it's successful, but it's being used to its full capacity right now, which was a statement about our students' need, but also how well that system's working. But I think that was everything. It was a really, really great meeting, and I was just so impressed with the presentations and the staff members that come to share their time.
That's amazing. That's amazing. That's a great committee.
It is.
Thank you for that. And actually, you reminded me about hockey. When I first got on the board, I remember the parents coming. Remember the board meetings back then? And it's amazing to me how many years later that we actually have a hockey team. And Dr. Valesky, I heard you were actually one of the people that dropped the puck, helped with the initial, yeah? Puck drop?
I did.
So, yeah?
And it was a very nervous time for me.
He got off before they...
Because Mr. Seeler's going to laugh at this, but the, right before we went out, and Karen, as a hockey parent, was a great resource in making sure that at Pro Skate, they were going to have a carpet, so when you walked out of the penalty box, you weren't walking on ice. But what they did is they put the carpet out on the ice about four or five feet out, so you had to walk across freshly groomed ice to get out there. And as I'm about to walk out, one of the parents who had advocated for the hockey team was telling the story about how he had fallen at a practice, landed on his back.
Oh, no.
And it got posted to social media right away. And I thought, this is how the kids are going to remember me. I'm going to be on my back, on the ice. And it would have been, it would have been viral in a matter of minutes. But I didn't, and we did the puck drop, and, you know, it's, I think it's going to be a great addition to our athletic offerings, and both males and females are competing at the highest levels, and they are, they are a rough-and-tumble group of kids, so congratulations to them.
No, I think that's great, yeah. That was very exciting. Okay. Mr. Sizmar?
Just real quick, you know, best wishes and blessings for a safe holiday season to everybody out there, the board, people that came tonight, the public, so, you know, let's remember those that are working through the holiday season, our first responders, police, and all that. You know, too much passion goes on in social media, we've talked about that, and, you know, God bless them for what they do out there, and our military. That's why we have the freedoms to say what we can say up here. So let's have a safe holiday season, and I'm not coming back here until next year, so